Those wishing to join in the pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I now call the order this city council regular meeting and city hall council chambers of 389 Spur Street on the second floor, Morgantown, West Virginia, 26505, Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, at 7:12 PM. This meeting is also being broadcasted live via YouTube at the City Morgantown YouTube channel. If the clerk would be so kind as to take role.
Yes. Bill Kuecky?
Here.
Wheezy Michael?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Here.
Danielle Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshbarger?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Buganam?
Present.
And the first thing we have is the approval of minutes now, we have not received one, so we're going to skip the January 21st, 2025, but look at the January 28th, 2025 special meeting minutes, as well as the January 28th, 2025 committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I will abstain.
Good to accept.
Yep.
All right. Proclamation, meeting, all right. Correspondence, as we wait for confirmation on...
Director Palfrey thought she was to show up at the February committee of the whole meeting, so she would like to be added to that agenda if possible.
Then we will skip that part, but good news, we have a replacement correspondent. Today, we will have a proclamation as we celebrate the West Virginia Chinese Association. Mr. Ray and Ms. Liz, if you would be so kind as to join me at the podium.
Hello.
Hi.
Good to see you.
All right. We don't have Brad here, so can somebody meet my picture?
Yes.
Stand right here for me, so the internet viewers around the world can watch. Whereas West Virginia Chinese Association is a statewide Chinese-American community compromising students, scholars, and professionals of Chinese origin, with proud history spanning over 25 years. And whereas the WVCA has made significant contributions to our community by fostering cultural exchange, promoting engagement, and providing vital support to neighbors, and whereas the WVCA organizes annual events, including the Lunar New Year Gala, which brings together residents from all backgrounds to celebrate Chinese heritage, strengthen communal bonds, and promote cross-cultural understanding. And whereas members of the WVCA exemplify dedication, service, and civic responsibility by actively participating in local events, including Independence Day parades, community outreach programs, and public service initiatives. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the WVCA demonstrated extraordinary generosity and compassion by donating face masks to the public and providing free meals to frontline healthcare workers through the Food of Love program. And whereas through these ongoing efforts, the WVCA serves as a cultural ambassador strengthening the fabric of our community and showcasing how shared traditions, volunteerism, and civic engagement bring people together for the greater good. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Joe up against the mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, and on behalf of the Morgantown City Council, do hereby commend the West Virginia Chinese Association for its invaluable contributions to our city's cultural enrichment, community well-being, and enduring spirit of volunteerism. In witness whereof, I have here on to set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed to this fourth day of February 2025.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much, setting council, and also all of the members of the six council, especially thank Lee, leading the six city commissions for this initiative.
And if you want to sit here and tell us about what you have coming up on Saturday, February 8th?
Sure. Okay, my name is Ray Leon, I know some of the members here, and seeing all committee members from our community. Okay, I've been in Morgantown for 25 years, and actually last year I received the recognition of our governor for 25 years anniversary to serve our state. Okay, anyway, in Morgantown, we have a Chinese-American association, which is mainly primarily consisting of professors, scholars, and students. So for the past 25 years, we do, you know, youth education, we have a Chinese school originally before, then also civic engagement, encourage our members to vote, and also the cultural exchange, that's a major signature program, you know, like our mayor just mentioned, Lunar Chinese, Lunar New Year, we have been doing that for the past 32 years. The first time was '93, at that time only a group of students sitting in a university classroom, so now we became a 500 member participants annually, especially before the pandemic. This Saturday, we will have, after the pandemic, it's back, first time back to the modern year ballroom, so we hope welcome all of members from the city council, and including our committee members, to participate in this very cheerful, joyful Lunar New Year celebration. And mainly, we have two parts, one is have a performance show, and Pittsburgh, Washington DC, and even Columbus, all the performers are joining us to have this kind of event. Second part, we have our traditional Chinese food to serve all the participants of the event, so welcome all of you to join us for this Lunar New Year celebration. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We have a special program. We deserve it.
Thank you. It's this Saturday, and Ray, what time does it start at?
I think it's at 3:00 and 5:00, is that correct?
Oh, yeah, I will send, I think it's 3:00. Let me send them.
I think the performance is at 3:00, and on your invitation, I think the performance was at 3:00, and the dinner was at 5:00.
Yes, you're right. 2:30, oh yes, 3:00 performance begins, and 5:30 dinner.
Oh, 5:30, okay.
The Mountain Layer Ballroom, this Saturday. And I saw it last year, and it was fantastic, the performances were wonderful, but last year it was at the church, let's not confuse anyone, Mountain Layer Ballroom.
We very much want to make this an event under our city council to promote the exchange and more local people joining us, so that maybe a little by little, we make it, I think this is the first time our city council sponsored this event, making it more engaging, so I think we look forward, make it bigger and bigger, so that we can make our community stronger.
Thank you. All right. And no library board, so that is it for our correspondence. Is boards and commissions listed? I don't see it. So we will hold off anything there? Is that our city, with boards and commissions, if we don't have it listed, do we just have to wait then, is that the policy?
That's probably appropriate.
Okay, we'll make note of that. I didn't even realize that wasn't on. All right, we have no public hearings, as well as no unfinished business. Now, we will move on to our...
Mayor, if I could just...
Yeah, absolutely, I'm sorry.
I apologize, but MUB said that they didn't hear from us, so they weren't sure if they're supposed to come, if they can get a representative here, do we want to have MUB present for that item number on the agenda?
I'd like to have him here to discuss it, yeah, this was their request.
Thank you.
Is there a presentation that goes along with that, that they have to get sent?
I think it was just more Q and A.
Yeah.
All right, moving on then, we are now on our public portion, which shall be subject to the rules established by council and adopted by resolution. If I could have the listeners... Thank you very much. All right, and I now open this public portion, and the first person we have is the head of our Human Rights Commission, Ms. Annie Criminy York.
Thank you for saying all of my names. The Human Rights Commission has got four commissioners at the moment, so a chair, a vice chair, a secretary, and another. We are looking to change our rules to make it so that there need to be three people at a meeting to have a quorum, because right now 50% is two people. With only two people present, the chair cannot call a vote for anything, because according to Robertson rules, the chair must ask for a motion and a second, and cannot make a motion or second themselves. So, in order to vote, you have to have Danny make a motion, Ashley second it, and then I vote her vote, and I can vote, and that's great. But as it stands, if there are only two people who show up and go to quorum, that does not work, we get nothing done. So I am looking to draft new language, 7:30 yet. Secondly, busy as we have been, tomorrow is the I Belong game for WVU in women's basketball, they'll be playing Kansas. Each year they do this as a DEI initiative, and they have people table all out in the corridor of Coliseum, and they give tickets to people who are tabling. We don't get a chance to watch the game because they're busy tabling, it's a good deal for somebody, but we will be participating in that. But while busy with those things, we did not get to doing a proclamation for Black History Month. I think in the past, the NAACP has presented it, I'm not certain, but nobody has applied to put one in for this year, and so I'll be working hard on that, hoping to present it at the next meeting, given today's political climate and cancellation of Black History Month, it seems quite important that we recognize it. Amen, end of lecture. Thank you.
Thank you. There's anybody else wishing to speak? Just come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have four minutes.
Hello, my name is Orlando Patricio Cruz, and I've been living here in Morgantown for about 10 years now, and the last time I was here, we had the camp band, and there's a lot of people here, and I'm just kind of stunned that there's barely anybody here right now. My major concerns is that I feel like our freedom of speech is being attacked to a certain degree when it comes down to the Israel and Palestine conflict now, and I feel like I don't know if everybody, you know, is aware of what's really going on. I'm easily putting the pieces together, I understand that, you know, I've been getting into politics... that will take it to the extreme, to the point where the message is not being crossed the right way, and then I feel like there's repercussions for the individuals that really do want to stand and use their voice, because I feel like not only I'm speaking for myself, but I'm also speaking for a lot of individuals that might not want to speak, that might not want to talk, or might not want to be able to put themselves out there, because they either, one, scared of ridicule, um, they're either gonna get looked at as, well, now you're a Hamas sympathizer, to the point where it's not even about that. Um, we're in a modern age right now where we have technology and we have resources that we can go to, we have journalists, we have numerous, um, data that we're really not looking at it, and individuals are, you know, it's a double standard. And honestly, I'm, I'm from New York, I'm, I'm from the belly of the beast of the concrete jungle where, you know, you have to, you have to move a certain way in order for you to be able to survive, and it's not necessarily, you know, the color of your skin, but I feel like it's more of understanding that, you know, things are not going to change overnight, and I feel like we're taking two steps back. I don't know any of you individuals, and honestly, I, I feel like you guys are really nice, I would hope to know that, you guys are really nice and really, you know, compassionate when it comes down to humanity. And, you know, I was happy that she said that, you know, we, about Black History Month and, you know, that conflict and, you know, just many different aspects that, you know, we know there's a deeper and core humanity that is missing out of that. And I just don't want Morgant- I know Morgantown is very diverse, you know, people might act a little crazy on the weekends, go on a party, and, you know, when it comes down to the football games. But overall, you know, there's, I don't, I feel like individuals choose to act a certain way in ignorance, to the point where it makes the whole bad other bunch looks bad. And, you know, I want to sit here and say like, thank you guys for just putting in the effort of trying to at least open up this platform of letting individuals speak and using their voice, because I feel like if we don't use our voices to speak up on the core truths, you know, the humanity side of it, the compassion side of it, and looking at all the both sides and actually having a conversation and discussing, instead of having a debate and trying to pick who's right or wrong, when in all reality, we're just looking for more sense. So with that, with that, thank you guys, and I just want to sit here and say that, I'm gonna try my best to do whatever I can for the community here, because, I mean, we're all, that's what it's supposed to be. Thank you guys.
Is there anybody else? Come on up, state your name, address, and you have four minutes.
Hello, my name is Justin Musser, I live on Eighth Street in Morgantown. Pretty much every day, I work at the PRT, and our maintenance facility is at the bottom of Beethurst Avenue, right at the bottom of the hill there, and I have to cross the street there every day. Cars are typically speeding every single morning, every time I'm going either to or from work, and it's frankly not very safe. Typically, I wait and try to cross the street at the stoplight at Sixth Street, but I don't think that the pedestrian crossing buttons are working at that street, and I was also wondering if it would be possible if we could get some of the lighted crosswalk buttons like are at the top of a street. I do a lot of walking around town, and it's frankly really dangerous whenever I'm trying to go back and forth, and I wasn't sure if this was somewhere where I could bring that up. And then, kind of on that same topic, I think someone the other day hit one of the lighted markers close to the law school and like knocked it off, and I was kind of wondering if there's like a timeframe, timeline for when that will get replaced. I like those quite a lot, because I do a significant amount of walking, and I'm hoping that we can maybe get one at the bottom of the hill there as well.
Sorry, we, we don't respond in this portion. Listen and take notes. Thank you very much.
What's your last name, Justin?
Yeah, could you say your name one more time?
Uh, Justin Musser.
Spell?
Uh, M-U-S-S-E-R.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Come on up, and say your name, address, and you have four minutes.
Good evening. My name's Chrissy Michael, address is two thirty-seven Hartman Run Road. I work for First Energy, um, Monpower being the local operating company. Damian, you and I have worked on several things together in the past, and I'm just here to do an in-person introduction and provide you with my business card.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just please feel free to reach out to me for anything that the city needs, I'm your local person, I actually live in Morgantown, so if you need anything, I'm here for you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak at this time? Going once, twice? All right. We do not have any special committee reports, we do not have a consent agenda. Now on to our consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance authorizing an MOU among City Building Commission and WVU Hospitals. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this ordinance covers the transactions needed to facilitate the project presented by WVU Hospitals at Council's Committee of the Whole. As a reminder, WVU Hospitals is constructing a new eye institute on property, they own Jason Van Bora's Road, and also constructing a new parking garage to serve that eye institute and other operations, which will be connected by an aerial pedestrian bridge between the two. The, the cities and the Morgantown Building Commission's role in this is agreeing to essentially relocate an access road that serves the North Side Fire Station. That property is owned by the Morgantown Building Commission and leased to the city pursuant to a series of lease revenue bonds issued in 2013, and so the documents before you will ensure all parties agree to that relocation and make provisions for appropriate placement of utilities in that access road and maintenance of the roadway as well. As with the Committee of the Whole, we ask Council to approve this and move the project forward.
Move to approve the ordinance?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Bill Koeki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes, past the seven zero. Next we have the consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending the city charter to use gender neutral language. Again, I look to City Attorney, Mr. Ryan Sine.
Thank you, Mayor. This proposed change is among the changes discussed by Council in September of 2024. Uh, its formal presentation to Council was delayed while other substantive changes to the charter language were considered, just to be sure that all the language coordinated. The effect of this proposed change is just to change several instances within the city charter where officials are referred to as he or him, so that they reflect that not all of the officials serving in those roles will be males. This is a proposed charter amendment by ordinance, so Council can pass this through on first reading tonight. A notice of public hearing, giving thirty days' notice to the public, has been published, and so if passed tonight, the second reading and the public hearing on this ordinance will be at your first March meeting.
I believe the example used was in relation to the mayor being a here-him, and as we've seen, it's not always the case, and so I just want to make sure that our charter reflects the diversity of our group.
That's correct.
Okay.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, Bill Koeki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes, past the seven zero. Next we have consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain portions of parcels of real estate in the sixth ward of the city of Morgantown, tax district fourteen, tax map thirty-one, parcel sixteen, commonly known as eleven Hartman Run Road, from one R one A, single-family residential district, and a B two service business district to a B two service business district, amending Article thirteen thirty-one of the Planning and Zoning Code of the city of Morgantown as shown on the exhibit here to attach and decree to be part of this ordinance as if the same were fully set forth within. I do all right, Ricky?
That's good.
Thank you. Are you the one that's gonna come and tell us all about it?
Sure.
All right, Ricky, come on down.
We're getting there, members of council. Um, so this ordinance would rezone basically a two-acre parcel of land that's being developed by Woodu Development LLC between Mineral Avenue and Hartman Run Road from a split zoning designation to a B two service business district. When the planning commission looked at this application, they found it to be consistent with the city's future land use map and comprehensive plan update, and recommended that Council approve the zoning map amendment as presented. That concludes staff's report.
All right. Uh, do you have any questions before we-
This one for, before the planning commission, and was vetted and approved?
Yes, sir, and actually the applicant and the property owner are actually cleaning up an issue where the property was split zoned at some point, and they're actually coming forward to take care of that issue, so we appreciate that very much.
Right now, one property is over the line of two different zones, so it's making the one property entirely within the B two.
Correct.
Ricky, this is, the property is all along Hartman, it doesn't go up the hill, it's-
It does go up the hill to Mineral Avenue, right now-
All the way up?
Right now, the top of, of the hill that meets with Mineral Avenue is zoned R one A, and so that portion, which is relatively small in depth, will be rezoned to B two, but the use on the bottom would control the site development, so there can be no other development or any other commercial activity on the upper part of Mineral Avenue if this were to move forward.
I got you. Thanks.
Move to approve?
Second. All right, thank you, Ricky. Any discussion?
Bill Koeki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes, past the seven zero.
They're on their way, so if you want to move that one down?
Yep, we'll skip to the next one. Uh, John, you want to come on back down? Now we're looking at the consider, for those watching along at home, now we're looking at the consideration of sole source purchase of mowing equipment. What does that mean?
Yes, so the mowing equipment we're looking at buying is a robotic system, so it's a, about sixty robotic mowers that will be controlled by a single piece of software. It will allow us to mow the public areas of the airport primarily, a little bit, some areas inside the fence, um, all through software. Uh, so all we, what we do is we have a trailer that'll have the mowers on it that are-
Move to approve.
Second. All right. Thank you, Ricky. Any discussion?
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganum?
Yes, passes seven zero. Next, we have the consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance authorizing a commercial lease and operating agreement with Shaft Drillers International at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. Mr. John Harwell, would you like to separate up? Need music like The Price is Right. We feel like there won't be more excitement.
So this agreement is for a new hangar to be built at the airport. It'll be adjacent to the airport rescue and firefighting and administration building, right along Taxiway Charlie. It will become the largest hangar on the airport property. It will exceed the size of the former Mylan Hangar by 5,000 square feet. That one is currently fifteen. This hangar will be twenty. They're looking for a forty-year lease because of the investment they're putting into the property. They're expecting the cost of the hangar to be somewhere between 1.2 and 1.3 million dollars. And they have three-jet aircraft that'll be housed in the hangar, along with the possibility of one helicopter. And they are a local company based in Mount Morris. Majority of their staff lives around the Morgantown area, and they fly out of our airport several times a week. So it would be nice just to have their aircraft based in Morgantown instead of up in Pennsylvania.
Busy airports are good for airport business.
Exactly.
Any questions?
Just help me out here. Forty-year lease is considerable.
Yes.
Are we taking into account what the possibilities of the airport might be over a period of time, and how this might be?
Yes, we are. So we're looking at the whole development area. This hangar is being built where the old tee hangars used to be, that were built there in the sixties, where we had them removed. It's redeveloping that site.
Big recollection of that.
So that whole area there is designated to be corporate aviation. That's kind of the future of that location of our property, is all corporate, and we're slowly moving towards that. You know, the Mylan Hangar is kind of our cornerstone piece. You know, we have a company in there that's, you know, doing corporate aviation and flying charter aircraft out of it. We have another new hangar that's built kind of around the corner from that one, which will be adjacent to this hangar being built. So it kind of all lines together there.
End lease terms. Are there any provisions for... I mean, are we locked into what they're paying right now for forty years?
No, it's adjusted annually by CPI. So we have a land lease with them for forty years, adjusted annually by CPI. At the end of the forty years, the hangar either averts to our ownership, or for our decision, we can decide if we'd like them to tear it down. So depending on the condition of the building, we have that right.
Typically, what are you looking at for a life of hangar?
Most hangars go anywhere, it all depends on how well they've been maintained. You know, that's first and foremost. But most hangars will last anywhere from sixty to seventy years, especially with this style of building.
Just for reference purposes, for my own satisfaction.
So the Mylan Hangar we have is sixty-two years old.
How old?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two.
Yeah.
That's in relatively good shape.
Yeah, it's in very good shape. We have some roofing issues that we're repairing on it, but other than that, it's in actually very good shape for a hangar.
Interesting.
It doesn't look like it's that old, honestly.
Make me feel more comfortable with this arrangement. Thank you.
So to follow up, who does the maintenance on this?
The owner of the building. So that would be Shaft Drillers.
So as you get towards the forty years, they're still required to maintain even though they're going to potentially give up ownership?
Correct. That's why at the end of the forty years, we have the option to either take the building or have them tear it down.
Or have them tear it down.
Yes.
It would be at their cost.
And then if I can give you back off that question?
Please.
Not that it would happen, but if something were to happen where they could not afford the maintenance of the hangar, what options would that restate?
So through the terms of our lease, we have the option of forcing network to be done. If they do not want to do it, we can bring in somebody at their expense.
Good to know.
All of our leases are written that way, so it gives us that protection.
We don't build hangars very often.
We do not.
Any other questions?
No, this is great.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Don't go too far, though.
Ready? Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganum?
Yes, passes seven zero.
They're on their way, so if you want to move that one down?
Yep, we'll skip to the next one. John, you want to come on back down? Now we're looking at the consider, for those watching along at home, now we're looking at the consideration of sole-source purchase of mowing equipment. What does that mean?
Yes, so the mowing equipment we're looking at buying is a robotic system. So it's about sixty robotic mowers that will be controlled by a single piece of software. It will allow us to mow the public areas of the airport primarily, a little bit, some areas inside the fence, all through software. So all we, what we do is we have a trailer that'll have the mowers on it that are solar-powered, or solar-charged. They will then go, we will then deploy them in the areas that, they call them pens, that we set up, and those are the areas that they're programmed to be in. And they will then mow the area based on the programming.
So you are describing a Roomba-style mower?
Yes, except there's sixty of them, different manufacturers, and one piece of software that controls all of them.
I feel like this is the start of a horror film.
It could be.
We were looking forward to goats.
Yep, they're, they're, their company's called My Goat, yes. So they're like goats roaming around your property.
So I was thinking that would be kind of gobbled.
Yep, it is. They're at several airports throughout the United States now, and they're doing several malls as well. So their footprint is growing, and they haven't, haven't really had any problems anywhere. All the airports have enjoyed it so far. And now several of those airports are working with the FAA, trying to get them to allow us to mow within the areas that are under air traffic control. Because the mowers won't go onto the pavement, but they'll be in the grass next to it. So we're working with the FAA and trying to get those changes made, too, so we can expand that program and do more. What this will help with us is really reducing the staff time. We struggle having enough staff to be able to keep up with the grass during, during the mowing season, and this will create the ability for, especially to keep those, those public areas in they shape. The airfield will continue with our staff in the, in the air-traffic-controlled areas.
You said sixty, but it's not sixty. It's only twelve, right? It says sixty pens and twelve goats?
Sixty pens, yeah.
Why so many more pens than goats?
Because it's based on size of property. So we have it all based on the different areas of our land. So we've got some areas that are fairly narrow paths. That could be one pen. And then we've got a bigger area that may be a pen. We have several of those all around.
So someone's going to have to go and move the actual mowers around?
We do it once a day. So we set it up in the morning. They go all day. We come back in the afternoon and collect them. Next day, we'll drop them off again and let them go.
But they don't look like goats.
They do not. Some of them are all-wheel-drive, some of them are two-wheel-drive. They're, they've designed the goats that we're purchasing based on the type of land we have. So there is where it's just flatland. We're going to use ones that don't need the extra capabilities. The areas where we have the steeper terrain, we're going to use the, like, the all-wheel-drive ones there.
I feel like I had this idea before, but somebody's capitalized on it first.
Software engineers.
How big are these units?
They're commercial-grade, so they're, you know, probably a little bit bigger than this podium for length-wise, width-wise.
What about height-wise?
They're short, less than a foot tall.
I assume they mulch?
You think I'm mulching blades on it. It's basically a four-blade type cutting system.
Well, thank you. I think you've answered anything I had questions about. I was worried about the use in other airports primarily.
Yeah, I don't want to be the first airport, so.
How long has this company been around?
I think they've been around ten years now.
So do we know what their, I was reading through, I tried to read through documentation, which we didn't get until yesterday afternoon, so I didn't have a whole lot of time to do research on the company. Like, what kind, the documentation says that they'll put them down and, you know, they'll probably mow, but they won't guarantee, like, the thoroughness or the, they'll always be working or, and this isn't a local company. So what kind of track record do they have with online time, offline time? How long would it take to get a repair or a replacement?
So basically, the way this works is we're buying a software subscription. That's what this company provides. The mowers themselves are from all different manufacturers. One of the manufacturers is the biggest manufacturer in the United States of all-terrain-style equipment. We'll have several of their units here. This company that's, they're rewarding the purchase to, they're out of Tennessee, out of Nashville. But the suppliers are all around the nation. We have companies, and what they told me was all the, all the devices are all made in the USA, which I'm very shocked with, honestly. I figured most of them would be foreign-made, but they're all made here in the US, plants all around the country. The one company that's the biggest supplier, they have offices throughout the United States. So they do have offices that are within a few-hour drive of here, so they can do maintenance when we need them to. They plan on training our staff to do it as well. So our staff will learn how to, how to do basic maintenance on them, how to reprogram them if there's an issue with the programming. They call them, they call them goat herders is their term.
I read. Do you know what the maintenance looks like? How often does maintenance generally have to be performed? I have a Roomba at home, and that thing, like, hits an edge, and oh my God, it's screaming at me four times an hour.
Yeah, no, these shouldn't have anything like that. From what I've been told, they will run all summer long without needing any maintenance.
And you're still anticipating... They can't go everywhere in the airport, so you're still going to have
Correct.
manual mowing.
Yeah, most of our manual mowing will be on the airfield itself. So the restricted areas that we have to be in are air-traffic-controlled communication.
I feel so silly. I have a question written down here. What is a goat's life expectancy? My son offered to look that up for me, but I don't think we're talking about the same kind of goats. I assume that kind of depends on which manufacturer you work with, and if they're only ten years old. But there's also no guarantee what, the contract does not guarantee what equipment you would get.
Correct. They have a lifespan of anywhere from six to fifteen years.
And where is the, it's about $120,000 of cost?
Correct.
Where is that, is that coming out of airport budget, or are we being asked to find it elsewhere?
It's coming out of airport operating.
Which will save us money because we won't have to have people mowing the logs.
Correct.
So to be able to keep up with the other maintenance.
Correct.
So what's the yearly cost for a manual mower?
This project saves us about eleven, about $32,000 a year by using these. So when you think about, you know, staff, it takes two to three people to mow the same area, and we're constantly mowing. And when we constantly have to mow one area, we're missing others, we're missing other maintenance. We don't have that much of a staff. We're a very small airport, very small staff. So this is really going to help us keep up other areas of the airport that we've been missing. But our return on investment, we'll have full return on investment within two years, less, actually, a year and a half is what it comes out to. ROI, ROI is very quick on this purchase.
I hope these goats are the goat.
Me, too.
But it's not, it's not a purchase, right? These are not ours. They will come and get them if we stop paying a subscription.
Yes. But we have control over what manufacturers want. If we decide that we need a different type of goat, they'll go out and swap it out for us, get the proper type. So for instance, we're finding that the goats that we get in one area may not work real well because maybe we have too much of a slope. We'll swap them out for, for the different style at their cost.
If there are, I guess I'm the only one asking a question. If there are so many manufacturers, why is this the only, why is this a sole-source contract?
Because they are the only company that's written the software to control them all. Nobody else has been able to do that yet. Yeah, so that's why they are manufacturer-agnostic, because they can use any manufacturer with their, with their software.
I don't have any more questions.
You've asked mine, so I'm good.
I think they're able to switch out and pick where hardware you prefer in terms of the software.
Just let me know when they're up and running.
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to, we want to come see.
Tell me what I need to avoid.
Can you imagine waking up from a coma and just seeing a robot chomping at grass coming towards you?
Yeah, good.
I don't mean to make light of it, but I would tear it up. But I'll be interested to see. Do I have a question?
So let us, let us know, let us know when you're, when you're operational, so we can come see.
Will do.
I'll say.
All right. And any discussion?
Yeah. I just have concerns. It's, the fact that it's a sole-source contract indicates to me that this is a relatively new and still emerging market and technology. And I'm concerned that we're paying a premium to be an early adopter of this when, I don't, it seems like we're, we're going to pay a premium when we don't actually know how well it's going to work or how long they're going to last. And we have a very tight budget as it is. I, I don't know how much of the labor, the manual labor, these are going to make up for. And again, I have a Roomba at my house, and it does a really okay job on the day-to-day. But I still have to have a regular vacuum and go around behind it at least once a week to make sure that everything is getting picked up. So I, I don't know how much of a cost savings it's actually going to result in. And we have a very, very tight budget this year and in coming years, and, and my concern is in duplication here. We're going to buy this, and then we're still going to have to pay folks to go out and mow.
I believe the ROI was stated. What did you say the ROI was?
It's, the ROI is in a year and a half.
But how much were we saving in terms of, I know that we'd have to go back out, but we're saving, as you said, $32,000?
Yes.
A year? So even if we were having to hit a few spots every once in a while?
Right. Now, the thing to understand is I only have two maintenance guys, and they do all maintenance. That's building maintenance, airfield maintenance, vehicle maintenance. They got to do all that mowing. They have very little time to do mowing. So there's been times over this past year, if you've been out to the airport, where you see the grass has been high in front of the terminal. That's because we just can't get to it. So this way, we can keep it pretty nice. You know, with having a much busier airport now with the carrier we have flying in, we need to keep it presentable. And this is one way that we've, we've figured out how to do it.
I really appreciate you coming up with this and checking on it and looking at other airports who have already been doing this and giving it a go, because
So one of the airports that's been...
it sounds like something, it sounds like something that we can benefit from and worth, given the return on investment, worth giving it a try. So appreciate your willingness to research it and find out about it. And tell us about the airport that you know about.
So one of the airports that is using it, West Virginia's tend to travel to a lot, and that's Hilton Head, Savannah Hilton Head Airport. And they've been using it now for over a year. They love it. They're actually expanding their fleet now. So they just entered into a new contract, and they're doubling the size of their, their fleet. They're the airport that is putting a lot of pressure on the FAA right now to try to...
Oh, to do an internal...
Was it Savannah or Hilton Head?
It's Savannah Hilton Head Airport. Savannah Hilton Head International Airport.
So the one in Savannah?
Yeah.
Because there is one on Hilton Head, too.
Yeah.
I did not remember saying, I picked people up at the airport on Hilton Head this year. I was like, I don't know. It's probably a little bit smaller.
How big is Savannah Hilton Head?
They're more than double the size of Morgantown.
I have no, compared, I have no idea.
What other airports are using, I know we said we're done with questions. What other airports?
I don't have the list in front of me. There are several
Okay.
that are using it. I haven't had that included.
Have you seen where O'Hare's using actual goats?
There's airports that have tried to hire things before. It doesn't surprise me.
Well, I think there's a company in Pittsburgh that has that type of thing available.
Yeah, I just didn't, like, look in this stuff up. It was like, O'Hare has actual goats that...
You have to have a real goat herder there.
And we can make lotion as a city from the goat's milk, and I think these might be preferable, so appreciate your diligence.
I was going to say, we have, though. You're the person that has the formula.
They clear 250 square feet of vegetation a day.
These, wait, which goats are we talking about?
The real goats.
The real goats.
It looks like we got Tampa, Florida. I'm looking at the list of airports. Tampa, Myrtle, it's on their website.
That's...
Athens.
On their airport page.
Birmingham, Tuscaloosa, Nashville.
Are those all airports or just customers?
These are airports that partnerships for airports, municipality airports. Oh, wow. I don't know how to, I can't zoom them up right now.
It's just a map, I guess.
Yeah. Anyways.
There's others.
I can easily get distracted, so I got to stop right now.
Yes, they're doing airports that are, they've expanded into city parks. Okay. I know the technology's been around for a while. I mean, you know, ten years ago, I looked at buying a robotic mower, so I did buy one, but...
My neighbor has one.
I almost bought one last year, too, and decided not to.
Our former, one of our former city managers had one.
Yeah, he tried to sell it to me.
Built his, yeah, built. Anyway, yes, it's been done.
My neighbor uses it on their hillside.
Yeah.
They're pretty secure in terms of their wireless communication?
For what I've been told, yes.
Okay.
They are, I believe they're cellular-based, is what they told me.
That's what it said. It said on the website they don't interfere.
Correct.
But I just wonder if they could be made to interfere.
Cellular technology in airports has been pretty good.
Okay.
We haven't had any issues. Thank you, John. Thank you.
Call the question, please.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
No.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganum?
Yes, passes six one. And we are going to... I guess we can finish out G, and then we'll go back to MUP, because I saw...
Yeah, there you are.
There you are. All right. Consideration of order granting exemption of vacant, of vacant structure registration at 528 Montangalia Avenue. And Danielle, if you would be so kind?
So this is a property that's been owned by the same property owner for fourteen years. It's been vacant the whole time, or since 2014, I believe, is when they purchased the property. It has been maintained in a consistent manner, minor issues over the years, but at its current time, it's, it's maintained in a, in a condition that's satisfactory to our code enforcement, and they recommend granting waiver or the exemption from, from the coach. Any questions about the...
All right, I guess.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
I'm going to abstain since I was not at the hearing.
Okay. Brian Butcher?
Similarly.
Mayor Buganum?
Yes. Passes five zero two abstain.
Five two zero?
Five zero two abstain. All right, and now we can backtrack to... There we are. E. Consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance amending Article nine twenty-three entitled industrial waste. And I believe we have Rich Rogers and Chris Linger here from MUP. Tell us about it. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you all for coming on short notice. I apologize if there's confusion on that.
So we just got our MPDS permit back from the DEP for the Star City Wastewater Treatment Plant, and one of the limits, the arsenic limit...
And one of the limits, the arsenic limit, they changed from point-two-eight pounds per day to point-two pounds per day for our industrial pretreatment users. So that requires the sewer use ordinance to get updated to reflect that change.
So less arsenic?
What's that?
Less, less, what's-
Yeah, point-two-eight to point-two.
Okay.
So they're lowering the permitted level in the, in the sludge, the waste of the-
Just for the pretreatment industrial users.
Okay.
Which has no impact on any of them. It's really insignificant. The users don't even, they send like point-zero-zero-one pounds per day, so it'll have no effect on anybody.
I guess then for a moment to brag, we're well below those numbers anyways?
Will we lower them?
No, were we already below those?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they lowered, they said, it's gotta be lower, but we're already way below there, so.
Way below. So we don't have to change any of the user permits or anything, but keep it a secret. We don't, we don't want them to hear that. So I won't deliver it any further. But yeah, it's not gonna have any impact.
So a formality of updating the ordinance to reflect this change.
So where does this, where does this go? It's the sludge?
It's in the waste stream that the sewer, the industrial users send to Star City.
So it comes from them to Star City?
Right.
But they, there's a limit on what their sludge can be before it gets to Star City. And that's what this limit is pertaining to.
That's what the pretreatment program is, is to protect our plant. So we don't see any, I mean, our plant's made for domestic use, residential waste, and the industrial users send all sorts of stuff. So that's why the pretreatment program's in place.
Oh, it's before the-
They have to pretreat their waste before they send it, send it down the pipe.
Then it's processed in with ours?
Yep.
So in essence, any remaining arsenic would even be lower that would be perceived in, in the output from that particular plant?
Right.
Before it ever gets there.
Correct.
Well, good to know.
What are some of the larger industrial users around here?
Uh, Mountain Top Beverage, WVU, the hospitals.
I'm-
There's the big ones, Mylan used to be.
Used to be a lot of things.
Right, right.
Well, let me just say, I do appreciate you all coming, especially when we're talking about things like arsenic in the water. I just wanted to make sure we had a very clear image of what it was we were discussing.
Just to be clear, it's not, it's not water. We're talking about wastewater.
Okay. That also is very important for people to be aware of. I don't have any-
Some of the paperwork that we were, or some of the information we were looking over previously, we, we had a hard time deciphering whether we were raising or lowering, where it was coming from and where it was going.
Like looking at the permits.
So we wanted, we wanted-
I think, I think a lot of that was some of the draft and the intercommunication before the final came out.
Right.
And so-
Okay.
That's where the confusion came in.
Okay. Good. We were like, wait a minute, they want us to do what?
Really appreciate you guys coming out to-
Yeah, thank you. It was important for the public to have you all here before we go.
Very clarifying for us. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Move to approve.
So what does the, what does the pretreatment look like? It's at the, at the different sources? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's a requirement of that entity.
Before it reaches them.
So they all have their own pretreatment facility on their side.
So each of the, each of the sites that you were talking about have their own pretreatment facility?
Yeah, correct. And their own individual permits.
And so they do that at their, at their cost, at their site? And then you all presumably help monitor something?
Correct. Yeah, it's part of our permit to manage the pretreatment program for the state.
Well, we appreciate that. Do you have a question?
You manage the pretreatment? I'm sorry, I, I-
Yeah, we, we, in our permit, that's part of what we're supposed to do as MUB, is where we give each individual user their permit, and then we have to sample, and we, they send us their sample results, and we make sure they're within their limits.
So you're not doing their actual pretreatment for them?
No.
You're simply monitoring what they give you?
Correct.
Thank you. Sorry that, you know, it gets to be a touchy thing, that it sometimes gets confusing. The more we can be, uh, the more light that we can shine on it, the better off people feel.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep, I agree.
Brian, uh, made a motion?
Second.
All right. Thank you all again. We really appreciate it. Thank you for having our pretreated levels already well below that.
Keep it up.
Thank you.
You can keep it down.
Keep it down. Keep it quiet. Bill Koeke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumble?
Yes.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes, passes seven-zero. Onto city managers' reports.
Uh, nothing really exciting to report. Uh, we have started street sweeping since the weather was nice this week to try to clean up some of the mess from the snowstorm. So you'll see the streets sweep around. Uh, but there's snow back in the forecast for next week, so we'll be monitoring that for training for that as well. So, uh, thought we could, uh, take this little break we have to try to clean up a little bit and get things looking nice and make it a little better for, uh, springtime when we start up full-time doing cleanups. That's all I got to report.
All right. And our city clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Um, I just wanna give a little bit of information about the election that's happening on April I wanted to share, uh, about our polling places. I had not spoke about our polling places for, actually, at all. Um, but, um, our early voting will be at the same location as it was in 2023, and that will be at the Historic Depot Building at Hazel Ruby McQuain Park. Um, and early voting is April sixteenth through twenty-sixth. By the way, all of this information is on our website, so folks can go, uh, to our website at MorgantownWV.gov and look at election, at the election section. It should all be there. All of our polling places, uh, are in the same place that they were in 2023, except for Precinct twenty-three. Um, they were at the Research Ridge last election, and they have moved to be combined with Precinct twenty-six. And they will be at the Suncrest United Methodist Church, the old Drummond Chapel Church, the little, the little white church, uh, behind the big one. So, um, I'll run through those really quick. Precinct one is at the Mountaineer Mall. Precinct two A and two B are both at Morgantown High School, at the auditorium lobby. Precinct ten is the First Presbyterian Church. Precinct thirteen is the Morgantown Municipal Airport. Precinct sixteen is Bow Park Senior Center. Precinct twenty-three and twenty-six, again, are, is at the Suncrest United Methodist Church, Old Drummond Chapel Church. Precinct thirty is the Saberton Hill Baptist Church. And Precinct thirty-one is, again, at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. I want to make sure I thank all of these, um, our airport director for allowing us to have, uh, one of our polling places at the airport. Um, our director of cultural, um, cultural arts, uh, for allowing us to use the Hazel Ruby McQuain, the depot, uh, for early voting. Um, Bow Park for allowing us to use their space also as a polling place. And then, um, those churches that we have used for many, many years, uh, I, I wanna make sure that we say thank you to the First Presbyterian Church, um, the Suncrest United Methodist Church, and the Saberton Hill Baptist Church. Um, we've been using their facility for a long, long time, and, uh, we utilize their janitor and their custodian, or custodian, and we just, we're very grateful for that. I know how, uh, hard it is to find a polling place, location, so if it wasn't for them, uh, we, we would be in a tough spot. So, uh, to them, I wanna say thank you. The nominating petitions, I'm sorry, the certificates of candidacy for those folks who have already turned them in, uh, we have one person, um, Jody Hollingshead for War Two. We have two in the Fourth Ward, that's Jenny Celine and Michael O'Brien. And two in the Sixth Ward, Mark Downs and Stephanie Hunt. Folks can still turn in their, their certificate of announcement until February tenth. Uh, seventy-five valid signatures should be turned in also by February tenth. So if we have folks that still would like to run, um, you can do that. Um, let's see. Writing candidates, we can still have writing candidates as well. Um, Tuesday, April fifteenth, a write-in candidate, candidate certificate announcement of candidacy shall be filed with the city clerk no later than the fourteenth day before the election. So we can, folks can do that as well if they don't make the, um, the timeframe before February tenth. Poll workers, we still need some. Uh, we do have all of our spots, I believe, uh, taken, but we always need, um, some alternates because folks get, you never know when they might get sick. Uh, we, we would like to have about fifteen, so folks can go onto our website, again, MorgantownWV.gov, and apply to be a poll worker. Um, I think that might be it for the elections. Uh, one last thing, uh, the Police Civil Service Commission will be holding entry-level police officer exams again in March. Uh, all of that information is on our website, so we're, we are accepting applications. Um, so if we have, if you know of anyone that, um, would like to become a police officer, please let them know. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, with council's entry of the order granting exemption from vacant structure registration requirements, I'll, uh, communicate that with code enforcement staff and assist with any related paperwork and, uh, and notification to the property owner. With the, the passage on first reading of the WVU hospitals project ordinance today, and, uh, also the building commission's meeting this afternoon, and passage of their second reading of that ordinance, we are, um, on our way to, uh, final reading and approval, after which we will schedule closing among all the involved parties and get those documents executed and recorded, making that, uh, transfer final. Uh, finally, I noticed you have a, a board and commission report delivered to council tonight. Uh, one of the past charter changes the council made was a, an amendment to coordinate all of those, uh, the board and commission reporting, uh, moved annually. Uh, I will work with the clerk's office to communicate those changes to our boards and commissions and try to get a, a regular schedule and format for council's use. I think that's all I have to report, city.
Thank you. I believe we started with you last time? Is that right? So now we're gonna move back over this way?
Uh, we're gonna be really short and sweet. We, um, we have an event tomorrow, but I'm not gonna steal Danielle's thunder. Uh, and, uh, I would encourage everybody to, um, we just opened sign-ups for people to volunteer at the Day Center at, um, Hazel's House of Hope in order to keep, uh, basically twenty-four-seven warming shelter efforts active. So if you'd like to do that, uh, go sign up. That concludes my report.
All right.
And I'm catching up from being away last week, so I will pass.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Um, I wasn't ready, but I still had a couple of minutes. Uh, yeah, I spent a lot of the latter part of last week, again, the weekend, at the, at the day room, trying to get that set up to be used as, um, warming center. Uh, things seem to be going well. I, I was on Talk of the Town yesterday morning, talking about the event that we're having tomorrow and said, you know, this year, things seem to be going a little more smoothly than in some of the past years with the warming shelter. So, um, knock on wood there, but, um, not a whole lot of issues. And tomorrow, Councilor Butcher and I and some friends are hosting a benefit for the warming shelter. It'll be from six to nine PM at the Co-op on Pleasant Street, one-thirty-one Pleasant Street, next door to one-two-three. Uh, we have four local musicians and three local comedians. A lot of the, our friends at downtown businesses who are supportive of our efforts donated some, um, auction and raffle items and some food for people who attend. We did this two years ago and were able to raise several thousand dollars for supplies and extra staffing at the warming center. So, uh, we're, we're hoping that this year is another successful event. The only other thing I wanna bring up is Friday night, the seventh, from six to nine PM, is First Friday for the Arts in downtown. And there's a special event happening this time. There's a sculpture smackdown, a lovely competition that's being hosted at the Art Lab on Willie Street. Should be a fun time. So make sure to visit a lot of the arts venues downtown and stop by there to, to watch some of the competition.
What, what is that?
Friday night, goes from six to nine.
Six to nine also?
Mm-hmm.
Pardon, the Evansdale Neighborhood Association is meeting in Allen Percival Hall, um, in the hall where all the stuffed animals are, um, uh, at five-thirty on Wednesday. So you have to kinda work that around to the benefit if you can come. And I imagine if you're hosting, you probably won't show up there and we'll give them your regards.
I, I emailed the Evansdale Neighborhood today and sent my apologies.
Um, mainly they're working on, um, kind of re-establishing themselves after not meeting as much, um, in the near past. And, um, I think they're gonna be, um, looking for some officers. So if you're brave and you live in an Evansdale neighborhood, this is a good place, a good place to come tomorrow evening at five-thirty. I attended something that I think other people attended earlier in the evening with the creative aging, um, uh, at Wiles Hill School, the art exhibit, um, that I think you were at and other people were at. And it was, it was, um, it was very, very well done. Um, there was a class that was a, kind of a sponsored class, and people, um, really seemed to appreciate it. They were, I was coming in kind of at the tail end of the presentation and they were lingering, they were lingering and lingering and talking to each other. So, um, I think that it was, um, good from a creative perspective and also good from, um, a social, social perspective. And they were very, um, um, proud of themselves in their collages and different, um, different kinds of, um, ways of looking at aging through movement and art and, um, discussion. It looked, looked like the kind of thing that we'd all like to participate in at one point or another. I also like to mention that I am still flying through our airport regularly. So I flew, um, back and forth through Chicago, um, sort of last, end of last week and through the weekend. Um, and then in another couple of weeks, I'll be flying through again. So I'm getting a full, full dose. And, uh, it's hard to describe the clientele that's going through, except that it's just mixed. It's mixed ages, um, mixed, um, destinations. I was asking people where they were flying to. Some were flying to Chicago, some were flying to all, you know, internationally, or they were flying to, um, other parts, to Denver and to other places. So it, it just was a, um, a nice, nice group, very full plane, and, um, and really great, um, flight attendant that was, um, uh, both quick, uh, quick, cheerful, safe, um, and witty. It was very, very ni- very nice. I said, my goodness, I couldn't believe how, um, and, uh, the one interesting thing is that there's, there's a height limit on who can be a flight attendant because, because of the, uh, height of the ceiling. But, um, but not being a particularly tall person, that didn't matter to me at all. So anyway, um, that's the end of my report.
Based on that story, you're implying that you were the flight attendant?
No.
Okay.
No, I was complimenting the flight attendant and, um, my husband watched her hit her head on something, and she was, I don't know, five-eleven or something. She- on something, and she was, I don't know, 5'11" or something, and she said if she was an inch taller, she could not, they would not hire her for that particular position because it wouldn't work.
I just wanted to give an update on the Belmar Waiverly, um, for Public Works. Um, it's going really well. We've gotten a lot of compliments and especially, uh, 'cause we've had some critical incidents there in the past several months, which made it really hard for, to get to a really, really fast response time. So this is going really well, um, and we've had less accident calls with people running side to side, so I just wanna say thank you. They did ask if it was possible, we can have, um, two more signs by the, the blind spot, and I think, think they wanted, wanted the entranceway of Waiverly.
There we go.
If that would be okay. But, um, I just wanted to say the first responders are, said thank you. And then, uh, as far as, I wanted to comment on the A Street. I do understand the issues there, 'cause I, I live in that area, too. Um, and I was wondering if we can relook at, uh, the top of the hill again, with the widening of A Street at the turn up there? 'Cause there is, I've noticed, I, I'm there every day, at least two, three times a day, um, crossing that, and, and we have some safety issues there, so, if that would just, uh, be a known one, but other than that, um, I wanna say thank you because the Belmar Waiverly is really turning out well, so, that's all.
So also, do we wanna look at six that he was asking about?
Oh, yeah, six street.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you would.
Yeah.
That, that's somewhere, I don't know if we don't need a button or we need a button, or...
Yeah, well, I'll stop.
It could be that it should just automatically turn if the buttons don't work.
That's where I crossed to.
There's several, just in the intersection, but yeah, we'll go out and look at that.
Is that a DOH?
It is, but we, we, we do minor maintenance.
Okay.
So if it's something minor, we can take care of it, otherwise we'll, we'll, if it's something we can't handle, we'll afford to do it.
Damian, was there a possibility of widening, widening the top of it?
I can talk about that later.
Your turn. My bad.
Thank you for taking care of all that, that's good. In keeping with the election information, I just wanted to indicate that it's not my intention to seek another term, so... Uh, and as far as Eighth Street's concerned, uh, that's on the agenda for the MMPO, actually, and it had considerable discussion. I do believe that that will be addressed, but unfortunately, I don't think it will happen quickly. But just some encouragement, there are people out there who share your opinion. And that's my report.
Well, who am I gonna bother if you're not here?
Wheeze will take care of you.
Oh, thanks, Jen. I pick on them, that's good.
Uh, my report is actually very simple. I noticed an update to our website, and, uh, Brad and his team are always watching, I think Holly works on the website, Holly or Shannon. Regardless, all three of them do such a fantastic job, so if you haven't checked out our website, please do, it's been updated, it's easier to click through and access, and it's got lovely pictures of all the wonderful happenings here and around Morgantown, so kudos to all three of them, and I'm glad that this time around, we didn't have to, uh, take on a polar vortex to come into the building between the snowplows and the power outages and just about everything in between. You had quite a month, Damian, I appreciate...
Yeah, nice break this week.
Yeah, I mean, it was, must've been stressful, 'cause it looks like you lost all your hair in the process. On that note?
Let's see, executive session. We're wanting to, um, move into executive session for discussion of matters relating to acquisition or development of property in the downtown area.
Second. All right.